Are you ready? Welcome to the September 17, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phone pagers and other electronic devices, communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. If you'd like to speak on any item today, please fill out a speaker request form there in the back of the bookcases and hand them to Ms. Holly at her left of our dais today. You can speak on anything on the agenda if you'd like, so please fill out a request form if you'd like to speak. Next, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and a pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Connie from Highway Department. Next, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda, please.
So move.
By Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is the Executive Proclamation and National Custodian Appreciation Day, October 2, 2020. I'm going to go ahead and read that and then our Superintendent Buildings and Grounds, Mike Cool, will have a few words afterwards and recognize some of our custodians and our people that work very hard for Pennington County keeping our Buildings and Grounds area amazing, so thank you. It's an executive proclamation, Pennington County, South Dakota, whereas custodians are our first line of defense in the war on germs and often it's a thankless task. Custodians work behind the scenes and sometimes while we sleep. Sometimes we walk around them in the halls not always seeing them or they work as important or seeing them or their work as important. And whereas Custodian Appreciation Day is celebrated every second of October each year, it recognizes the hard work that it takes to keep our buildings in tip-top shape as well as recognize the people who diligently work to make sure we have workplaces that are spotless and sanitary. Whereas custodians contribute to critical first impressions and the success of any businesses or organizations by delivering outstanding services and running well-maintained buildings. Whereas their skills save businesses and organizations money while maintaining carpets and surfaces last to last longer. Seasonal updates and maintenance, I should have read this before, seasonal updates and maintenance help buildings to run more effectively too. Custodians workers, custodial workers make sure buildings are ready for each season and running correctly. As a result, the buildings are safer and healthier for those entering them. Whereas the Pennington County buildings continue to look organized and presentable because our custodians effectively keep everything in top-notch condition. Now therefore, we, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners of Pennington County, South Dakota hereby proclaim October 2, 2020, as National Custodian Appreciation Day. All citizens are encouraged to give recognition and show appreciation to all men and women who work as custodians in order to keep our workplaces running smoothly and clean and in good condition. Just a couple of things. If you've ever been in our buildings or on our grounds, our custodians in Pennington County are our top-notch people in our county for keeping our things basically well-groomed everywhere. And if you see, if you've ever been in our bathrooms, if you've ever been outside and it's been anything to do cleanup, they've been pretty amazing during this time of this pandemic as well, going above and beyond. And I don't think most of us know how much that takes until you've done that job. So we appreciate everything that they've done for us at keeping our buildings safe and clean for our public and for our employees. So this commission recognizes them today on October 2 because we think they're pretty amazing and what they do is pretty great for Pennington County.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LeCroy.
I do agree with Ms. Hagcock and as a person who's owned and operated a building, floor care business and ground and maintenance business for about eight years with my wife, really appreciate the hard work that you guys do. You guys are the first line of finding out where problems are, reporting them to get them fixed and the first impressions anybody has when they walk into any business or property is how it looks. And so you guys are doing outstanding job of doing what you do. And I've even brought people down and given recognition to what you guys do and some of the practices that you use, I've even given to other people to follow. So I really appreciate the work that you guys do.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Cool.
Good morning. Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. This morning, I'm joined by, with Steve Lukin, who is team leader here in the Administration Building, and Nancy Northcutt, who helps clean the care campus and highway buildings. Thank you for doing this. It's appreciated. I think that more than ever, I think, I hope that there's a greater appreciation for what custodians do for us all, especially during this time where there are such great concerns about the spread of germs and keeping things clean. So I do appreciate the recognition. Thank you for that. If you grant me, I'd like to just identify our other custodians as well. We have two here. I was going to have two others as well. Yesterday, we learned that they would be able to attend. The majority of our custodians work late at night. They're usually sleeping right now, so I thank these guys for coming in. Well, I'll identify our buildings and our teams. As I noted early, Steve is our team leader here in the Administration Building. We also have Tana Koch, Rod Weller, and Kathy Stewart in this building. The Public Safety Building, Don Danley is our team leader in that building. We also have Mark Miller and Marcus Braveheart. In the courthouse, our team leader is Dale Anders. We also have Mark Jorgensen, Tammy Ring Jarred, and Kyle Clifford. At other facilities, I know that Nancy works, helps take care of the care campus and highway buildings. We also have Marie Laircamp, who assists with the care campus and also takes care of the jail staff areas. And Irene Anders, who also assists in the cleaning staff areas at the jail, the Evidence Building, and the DCI facility here in town.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
We also need a motion to approve the 2020 National Custodian Appreciation Day on October 2.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto. Second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? Thank you all, Nancy, Steve, and your team of people. Not seen, but well appreciated for what they do. So a lot of times, again, we don't see what you folks do a lot of times because we're not here. You do it at night. Once in a while, we see you turn the days, but we appreciate everything you do. Our buildings and our grounds always look amazing from you guys, so couldn't do it without you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mike, could you have your employees stand up so that we could give them a round of applause?
This is who I have here today, so.
Can I give them a round of applause?
Thank you again, folks. Anything for, you guys want to say anything? You don't have to. You don't have to. Sometimes people like to say something and you don't have to do that. How long you been with us? How about that?
Just a year and a half.
Year and a half, Steve. Nancy?
Six years.
Thank you. We appreciate you both.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item six is the Pennington County Employee Service Recognition Awards. We have, I think I'll read the first ones of the years of service of people that don't have, Holly, are these the ones?
Yep, you should have.
I have all of them?
Five of them, yes ma'am.
So Gary, I'm going to have you have them come up to the dais and I'll read their names and you give them their recognition awards and then we'll all go down and if we'd like.
Elbow bump them.
Yes. So first, we have 25 years of service. Ms. Jane Cheeseman has been here since 6/26/95. She's a jail staff assistance assistant and she's been with us 25 years. Is she here? Thank you, Ms. Jane. Donetta Banning, 7/27/95. She's a jail accountant, been with us 25 years. Awesome, thank you ladies. 30 years is Alexandra Sandy Delaney, 2020/1990, SAO Office Manager. Ms. Delaney here. 30 years of service, Ted Rufflett Jr., 5/1/1990, ESCC, which is our 911 Assistant Director. Thank you Ted. 35 years, William Bill Sletton, 7/8/1985, Highway Maintenance Worker. Thank you Bill.
Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you for your service. Again, our team, Pennington County here, we have some pretty amazing people. We retain people a long time and without these people and their experience, I don't think Pennington County can be where it is today because that experience is what helps us move forward in many ways and also through the things that we need to make changes and make Pennington County better. That experience and those years of service help to move us forward of what we can change to be different or what we need to keep the same that has been working. So without them, Pennington County wouldn't work the same as well. And a lot of us that are in training, a lot of times with our first coming here, we know from highway service, have recognized that since I've been here. We have Mark's 30 years of service and Joe just coming on and seeing how that, a newbie with an experienced 30-year-of-service person in Pennington County has moved Pennington County in the Highway Service Department a long ways. They have an amazing team. Connie's been there a long time and without a lot of those people that were in the Highway Department or in other areas in Pennington County, you couldn't have somebody just come in and just run the place because these people have been running our Pennington County behind the scenes for a long time. And we don't really see them as well. Once in a while, you see Connie, but she's not going to get recognized because she just does her work or Mark just does his work. And Joe gets the recognition for that. He does recognize his people well, but I'm just saying in general, we forget that sometimes that the top guy, he does a lot of times get, you know, he gets the grief in one sense, but he also gets the credit. And those teams behind the scene in Pennington County that have been with us and that experience for a long time has made the difference for us. So we couldn't do it without all of the people that have to have that experience behind the scenes and making us become a successful team here at Pennington County. So thank you all, the 25, the 30, the 35, the 5, the 10, everybody counts here. Everybody in training, as you already know, elected officials, we couldn't do it without you. We need you, so thank you for everything you do. Next, we will have. Item number seven is Pennington County Loss Control Safety Achievement Awards on behalf of South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and SDML Workers Compensation Fund. And Gary, if you would, have that on her, please.
Thank you. Several of us just returned from the county convention in Sioux Falls that was held on Monday and Tuesday of this week. It was my privilege while we were there to receive and accept awards on behalf of a couple of our departments and our employees for their value that they've placed on loss control and safety to our employees. And so the first two I would like to present are for Pennington County Highway and Buildings and Grounds. There's three levels of award for that. There's a bronze and a silver and a gold level. Both of these departments exceeded both the bronze and the silver level and have attained the gold level, and this isn't the first time that that's happened. What this does is it means that not only is it a money savings for the county, but it's, it shows and demonstrates that they've taken steps to make sure their employees are protected in a safe manner, working in a safe environment. And so that your losses are minimal as far as time off and injuries are concerned. And so I would like to ask Joe to come up on behalf of the Highway Department and receive the award. You already have a plaque from the past.
We'll get Connie up here too. She does a lot of the work behind the scenes on this one.
You have a plaque from the past, so what this does is it presents you with a year to add to that. And so we appreciate the time and commitment that's been put into this in order to be recognized for this type of award. So we thank you very much. Mike, I would ask you to also come up and same thing with Buildings and Grounds. Buildings and Grounds has done a tremendous job with being able to provide a safe environment for their employees and we really appreciate what all you have done and the efforts that have been made to take care of those employees. I did mention that this provides a savings to the county financially also. That's really, in my opinion, that's the minor part of it. The safety of employees is the most important part, so thank you very much for that.
I would like to note that Dave Eccleston, our Assistant Director in the department, does coordinate this work, so he's not able to be here. He's out on a march this week, so thank you. I'll share your thoughts with him.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
For most of you, you've probably seen this plaque in the back of the room over the years. This plaque was received by the county in the year 2016 for, because the county employees have reached the platinum stage that year. They have now done that again in 2020. Reaching a platinum stage means that you have minimized the cost of all coverages for, whether it's work comp, under the liability, maybe the auto liability. There's a number of different coverages that we purchase as a county for protection. And anytime you keep that to a minimal amount, you may qualify for the platinum. That is not, that there's, not to say that there's very many in the state that receives that level of award. This year, there was 12 entities in South Dakota that received that award. Pennington County Employees are one of them that received that. We're especially proud of that from the employee standpoint that they have taken that consideration and concern to the level that they have to provide that protection. So we really appreciate it. We thank you. This plaque, again, will be put in the back of the room to be on display and we thank you very much for doing that. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Gary. Next, we will have the Consent Agenda by Ms. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hinnies, Commission Manager. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from, excuse me, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 1, 2020, to acknowledge disinternment permit number 1356924. Number 10 is approval of the permit to occupy the right-of-way and the request for road closure traffic control for the Rapid Valley Volunteer Fire Department Pancake Supper. Number 11 is approval of the Community Development Block Grant Application for funds in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Number 12 is approval of the Community Development Block Grant Application for Physical Year 2021 submitted by Health and Human Services. And finally, number 13 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of August 2020 for Human Resources and Fire Administration.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there anyone from the public who wish to speak on item 8 through 13 today? Is there any Commissioner who would like to pull 8 through 13, any of those items from the consent agenda today? Now, do we have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gary.
Second.
Mr. Drews.
Second.
Motion by, second by LeCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 14, Ms. Cindy. 14A, Ms. Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. Before you today, we have the review of the 2021 budget and hopefully working towards the final approval of the budget. I did work the numbers in a few different ways for you. I don't know if you want me to go through those options with you, if you have any questions about the information that I provided.
Let's start with the general fund to dissolved TID revenue by $100,000. Could you do an explanation and then we could do a motion or questions on that first?
Earlier this year, I was informed by the City of Rapid City that they were getting ready to dissolve another TID, which would have brought another approximately $15 million on as taxable value. And due to some circumstances, that didn't get done and probably won't get done by October 1, which is the deadline in which I would need that in order to use it to calculate levies. So it will get dissolved and what that does is if it's dissolved after levies are set, when we receive the money for that, then we apportion it up to the taxing entities in which that lies. So that will increase our dissolved TID revenue next year. So I'm asking you to increase that revenue line item.
Any questions or a motion?
No, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So Cindy, is still your understanding that will be done before the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Moved by LeCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any others discussion? Now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Cindy, if you would, on the second motion, explain why we're doing it on the 29th and why we couldn't just approve it today.
Actually, this is a time when I'd like you to consider the other request for the change in the wage study or the wage scale. So I would ask, I guess, John or Holly to present that part of it and then you can decide which way you'd like to move.
Okay.
And Holly, if you would explain, we did send a memo, but explain, and John, if you want to help her, please, why those changes and where those changes are going and why we cannot approve this today as well. Ms. Cindy can help with that at the end, but thank you, Ms. Holly. And John, if you'd like to come up, sir, we're HR Director.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioners, what you have in front of you today is a request to adjust the new 2021 Gallagher Wage Scale by an increase of 1% effective 2021. The reason why you would be unable to finalize the 2021 budget today is that we would ask the departments to go back and re-figure their salaries so that way Cindy can bring you final budget numbers and the resolution that's required for approval. So without having those numbers today, you wouldn't be able to finalize.
John?
Morning Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So what we discovered as we were going through this process of preparing for implementation, the scale is very effective. It will work. We found, though, that there was about 400 employees that would receive less than 1% increase in the new year going to the scale. So by adjusting the scale, first, let me explain the process. So we'd actually placed employees on the Gallagher scale as it was approved. What we're asking today, then, is once they're placed on the scale, that would adjust the entire scale by 1%. So that would ensure that every employee would receive at least a 1% increase next year. So for example, we had a few employees that were only scheduled to receive less than 50 cents of an increase for the year. Now, that was worst-case scenario, but we had, again, over 400 that would see less than 1% increase next year. So Holly's done an amazing job here, working with Cindy and putting the numbers together, but you'll notice it's, doing that 1% adjustment to the scale in the new year would increase our wage line by about $430,000. So that would be the ask. If I remember right, it ended up being about 4 tenths of a percent or?
A point, a half a percent overall in reserves.
In reserves. So you'll see that would be a slight decrease in the reserves. Now, I do want to point out that, again, we've not considered any of the other adjustments in this process, so we're most likely going to see a pretty sizable COVID reimbursement to the county. That's not been calculated in any of the budget numbers that have been presented, so that will also offset this as well as increase on our overall reserve for the next year. So I wanted to be sure to point that out as we have this discussion.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. And one thing, Commissioner, if we move on, so we were at 539, 539,000, basically 35, and we'd be increasing it with that to 969,035 because we'd have to add with the 1% of 430,000. So the grand total for 2021 would be 96935.
Correct.
Commissioner LeCroy, please.
I'd make the motion to approve the 1%.
A motion by LeCroy. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Taken by DeSanto for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So the 96935, does that include benefits?
It does not.
No, that's the wage line only.
Okay, okay. So what's the total, including benefits?
1.1 with retirement and OASI.
1.1?
We just were trying to strictly keep it apples to apples for you in discussing the wage line item itself.
So, sorry, Commissioner Drews.
It's still roughly a 55 to 60% decrease from current year with regard to the increase.
So that is the final number, is that? So Holly, again, on the 29th, we still need to have a meeting because Cindy, okay, because you can't just add that today.
If the commission chooses to consider, we would need to get you final numbers.
So Commissioner LeCroy and Commissioner DeSanto, are you doing it with the benefits at 1.1 or are you keeping it at 969 without the benefits?
The request was for the 969. I think they'd come back with that.
Well, the motion would be for the 1% and how it applies across the board. So it would be the 1.1, everything altogether.
Okay, that, Madam Chair, Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, but this has already been added to those options, correct? We're going to be looking at new options.
As far as levy goes, that will remain the same, pretty much. I could play with the numbers and work them out a little bit differently, but the biggest thing that you'll see is the reduction in reserves by half a percent by adding another million dollars.
Okay, I think that's acceptable. Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Just a reason why I look at this is when we were going through this wage study, I knew we were going to have some transformation, some changes, and I think every department's done a very good job of restructuring their job descriptions, what needs to be done, and this is just part of the process, I believe, of getting everything up to where it needs to be and it's good faith for our employees to see this new study, the way it's going and how we're going to go into effect. That's why I made the motion for approval. I think we can work through this. I think some numbers may come back lower with the COVID reimbursements and so forth, but that's actually a good time, this is a good time to do it and be further to our employees.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
John, the only thing that I'm not quite grasping is under the second paragraph down or third paragraph down, the details, it says several employees will actually realize a loss of wages with restructure and the reduction of time of service paid to milestone anniversaries. Is that just because of where they fell during the year that they met their milestone?
Some would have received it under the old or current process.
Right.
Which has been in place for a year and a half. That's changing, so it is truly just on the milestone anniversaries. So for example, a 12-year employee right now, under our current structure, would have received a time and service payment next year. received a time and service payment next year. Under the new program beginning January, it's the 10, 15, 20, 25 anniversaries, not those in between.
Okay.
So that's the piece about the loss, is because of that change, they wouldn't realize that gain, that benefit from the time of service.
I see. Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we do have a motion? Any other discussion?
So Madam Chair, do I understand the motion to read then that it does include the 1%, which would include both wage and benefit?
Yes, sir, at 1.1.
That was my intent.
Okay.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, and Marx too.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. So, do we have to set that nine o'clock meeting on the 29th?
Yes, if you would.
If we can make a motion, does that work with people's schedules, the 29th of September at 9:00 AM, Board?
Madam Chair, I'd make that as a motion.
Motion by Drews, is there a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroy.
So this would be a special meeting?
Yep.
On the 29th for the sole purpose of finalizing the budget.
Yes, and the numbers. Give us just a second, they're looking at their schedules.
I'm good.
Marx good. Lloyd, you're good. Okay. Drews, you're good. I'm good. Ron, you good on the 29th at night?
I believe I will be, sir.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion, please?
We got it.
Oh, made by Drews, second by LaCroy, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Thanks, John, for moving that forward. All right, next, we have items for buildings and grounds. Mike Cool.
Good morning, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. At your last commission meeting, I brought forward a proposal, I was seeking authorization on for buying ionization equipment for HVAC systems at the jail and other type of kind of holding or residential facilities. At that time, I indicated I would return again with additional facilities. We need to spend some time looking at the air handler systems with the vendor to see what could be installed. I'm bringing forward a, another proposal today, but I'm seeking authorization from the commission to enter into another agreement for additional equipment installed at the courthouse and courthouse annex, the administration building, evidence building, and the highway We are still looking at, we just made a modification to the air handling system in the courthouse annex as of yesterday, trying to see, understand the impact that it might make relative, and then, this, the reason for that is to make this equipment function the most, in the most effective manner that it can. Therefore, I'm asking for a little bit, the commission allow me to have a little bit of flexibility to work out that agreement with what our final equipment needs are going to be at the, at that facility, so I'm seeking approval to enter into another agreement for up to $230,000. I don't expect that we will hit that number, but I'm asking some, for some leeway there. And then with that, I guess I would stand for some questions that I did provide, I guess maybe I could reiterate some of the information about this system. What this does is charge particles in the air and, which also helps kill pathogens in the buildings. This has the benefit of, compared to some other systems, this system has the ability to, to send some of those charged particles into the, into the spaces as well that help kill the pathogens within that space. So there's some, some treatment benefits to this as well. But it helps reduce odors, helps improve energy efficiency, both by, we could reduce our, our outside air intake at this time, utilizing the system, it also helps us keep our filters cleaner. With that, I guess I will stand for some questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So Mike, the last time, I think, we gave approval for about $315,000 for the GPS. So the 230 is on top of the 315?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I, I would reiterate that this is money that would be reimbursed through the state COVID relief fund.
Do you have confidence that this will do essentially what it's designed to do?
I, there are other systems out there. My approach to this, without, I'm not, I'm not an expert in all these different systems and there is not enough time for me to, to become one. One of the challenges we're up against is we need to get these installed, paid for, so that we can be reimbursed before the end of the year. That's, that's the challenge that we're up against. I also have, I also have to find a way of procuring this stuff through an established contract or something, so that is the reason. But I'll reiterate the reason why we selected this system above others originally. It's got lower maintenance costs from our point of view. There are UV systems out there that can, can help clean air or keep coils clean as well. Our concern with them is that the lights in those have to be wiped down on a fairly regular basis because they will begin to get covered with dust and stuff that's moving through the, the system. The bulbs also have to be changed occasionally, where this system is, there is not an expectation that there's really any maintenance at all for it. As I noted, the air, with this system, the air and space is, the spaces that air flows into are treated to a degree with these charged particles which will kill, kill these particles. A UV light does, will take care of what's right there immediately that it shines, whatever it shines onto, but it doesn't necessarily treat the, the air that's moving past beyond through the air, air handler. So that's one of the other reasons why I looked at it. I also gained confidence in knowing that Monument Health installed the, is installing these units, or has already installed these units on here. Currently, most of the major airlines in the United States are planning to retrofit their airplanes with this system now, and Boeing is, Boeing and Beechcraft have announced that all of their future airplanes will have this system onboard. That's, that's kind of the basis with some of the logic that we utilized to do this. One of our biggest concerns was the maintenance aspect of a potential UV, UV system, which would be one of the other options for this. I, I'm hoping, I did not want to come in here and try and state that one technology is better than another because I don't feel that I'm the, the most qualified to do that, and we have, we have salesmen who want to sell their, their equipment and they have their own perspectives on this. But once again, I'll note that one of the challenges we face is we have to get this equipment installed and paid for before the end of the year, and just figuring out how to procure it is a big challenge.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make a motion to authorize Mike Cool to rush our Pennington County Buildings and Grounds to coordinate and accept a final O'Connor company quote for a global plasma system totaling $230,000 or less.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks for bringing this board, Mike. You know, I had, I still have some concerns with that amount of money, but I do know, you know, for some of the facilities that we have with the care camps and the jail, this is, is a benefit to us. And, and with the funding that's available to help do this is a plus to, to do all the other ones. That's one of the reasons why I'm supporting is because I think, you know, we do with the jail and the care campus, this is something we would probably have to look at in the future, but right now, it's, it's pretty much immediate need if we want to get some of that funding to help with that. My only caution is, 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 and we're probably not going to find out, is the, the long-term maintenance. I know you've done some research on it, it's self-cleaning, it's supposed to hold up to the elements and the equipment outside, and I guess those are a few of my concerns. I've seen equipment outside, it doesn't take long for them, you know, with the snow and the rain that we have to deteriorate, and, but if it helps keep the coils clean and you have to keep, do less maintenance on our, our HU access, that's a plus too, but those are among the concerns that continue, being able to find the parts that we need later on and so forth. So that may be something we, we research as we go forward, so we, we're ahead of the game on that.
Yeah. And the, one of the reasons why this was attractive to us because is, from what our, our perspective, this, this looks like it has less maintenance requirements.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I'm going to support this also, mostly because I feel that the energy savings is going to eventually pay for the, the cost of the switch over, and that it is going to make the air safer to breathe for our, especially like Lloyd said, in areas like the care campus and the, and the jail, where I'm always concerned about pathogens flowing through the air over there. So I'm going to support this. I, too, am a little bit concerned about the cost, it's a pretty high cost. I had asked you at the last meeting if you could come up with, with what we're spending on, what the approximate energy in dollar savings would be, don't know if you got that information.
I, I don't know how to, to define that for you in, in terms of, we don't have any individual operations. I mean, what, what will probably come, become clear over time is where our filters look like.
They're estimating 30% in the, in the information that you gave us.
Right.
30% is quite substantial.
It is, it is.
And then also pointing out that if there's less maintenance, then obviously there's less cost hourly to our, to our employees and less cost for parts and service and stuff like that, so I think it's a, I think it's an appropriate idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second to be, approve it?
No, we haven't voted.
Okay, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 16?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So at prior meetings, we've had discussions about job titles within the state's attorney's office. What we're proposing today is instead of calling it an investigator, we're actually recommending we have a prosecution investigator added. This will provide clarity and, and role, it will also identify that they're working through the state's attorney's office with the prosecution side of the business. What we're asking today, then, is for approval to add the prosecution investigator at a B24 to our grade listing and position listing that we maintain in the HR office.
Thank you, John. Do we have any?
Move for approval.
Discussion? Motion by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Just a couple of things. Number one, the total that we added to our budget with the three new FTEs that we're doing is 193,000 to the state's attorneys, which is at 5,863,000 right now. We have added, in the last few years since 17 till now, we've added 11 new FTEs to the state's attorney's office with those. That's a lot of FTEs.
Yeah.
I won't be voting, I'll be voting no on this today because of the job descriptions are no different than, if you listen, if you look at investigates, all assigned cases, interviews of witnesses, locates, does what a regular investigator to do, does, and I believe between the sheriff and the police department, we can work in coercion with them in order to get these things done. I don't think we need to create departments with individual investigation or do Health and Human Services and drug diversion stuff is a good thing, but also 11 FTEs since 17 is a lot of increase in FTEs for departments, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I, I simply voted to approve this or suggested we approve this based on simply the job description. There's not a FTE request at this time for that position. Am I correct?
If I could, Madam Chair, they have someone doing this as an investigator. This is to create, again, the job title where there's specifically states that it's a state's attorney side, so it's the prosecution investigator. We have an investigator in the public defender's office as well.
Right.
It's called a pre-trial investigator in that office, so this is an existing person. We're just adding a title that provides clarity to what they do.
That's what I thought, it's not for a new position.
Not for another FTE, no.
That's what I was.
So this isn't the one that's added with the four, five, and six on the state's attorneys that was on our 2021 FTE request?
That, I couldn't speak to that, Madam Chair. I know that they have an existing investigator, and what we're trying to do is give them a title that actually provides clarity to where they work.
Madam Chair.
So you have a prosecution investigator and you needed another one? That's what, this isn't today, but that's what they were asking for, another one that I thought we approved those three already.
But we already approved them, so they're already approved. This is just a title.
You approved adding the FTE at the last commission meeting.
Yeah, right. Madam Chair, if I may, if I, if I remember, I think this was kind of brought forward on your behalf because you wanted clarification of what the title of the prosecution from our discussion, and so they did what was requested was to bring back a job title, changing the job title to what it actually is.
So now they needed another, they, in my understanding, I didn't know they had another prosecution investigator and were asking for another one. I thought they were asking for a job title with an investigator to add to the state's attorney's office. I did not understand at the time you already had a prosecution investigator and you needed another one.
Again, I, I can't speak to the, the head count piece.
Hey, do you know?
What I do understand is that they have an investigator, we're changing the title so that, that provides clarity to what their role is.
That's my understanding, that's what was addressed at the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Is that that position is there, it's just getting the job title.
So it wasn't there beforehand, but we approved it last meeting, so there never has been a prosecution investigator, it's just because we approved one and now we're giving it a job description and a title.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, thank you. So it clarifies their position and what they're doing as well. So basically, you have another investigator in the state's attorney's office.
But the motion at the last meeting was to approve an in-house investigator position and an FTE.
Yep, and this is.
In 2021.
And this is basically the DVM rating and the grade that this person that will add to that department. And again, you are adding, it increased 96,000 with the three FTEs, you added three more, you added another 200,000. Our budget at the, the state's attorneys is at 6,200 something, so you've increased it about 296,000 this year with 11 FTEs in, from 17 to 21.
Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Drews, I, I understand what we're doing today, I'm just saying, do you understand all the consequences of what we're doing? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Drews.
Question, Jay. My understanding was that this investigator was either on contract or working, uh, prior to this, and that we're simply switching this over to an FTE, uh, position.
That's my understa-
Oh, so it, yes, it's, yes, that's correct. So it's an existing person doing that work, but he's coming on to the county. So it's the same person, we're clarifying the title because right now, we have three different departments that have investigators, again, the law enforcement side, PDL and the state's attorney's office. So we provide clarity to the state's attorney's office by calling it a prosecution investigator.
So was this on a contract basis prior to this?
It, as I understood it, was part of the MacArthur structure.
Okay.
Right.
But it wasn't something we had before?
Yeah. The position, the person has been there.
Correct.
Correct. They, they currently exist and, and perform these duties.
For who?
We've been paying him for several years.
Well, not for several years.
Not several, I, I don't have the hire date.
A year, but I mean, he's already been hired, he's already working for us, and we're just, uh, specifying his job.
Instead of, instead of being through a MacArthur grant that it was hired for, we've hired him on the, to the county, um, as a, under the state's attorney from the MacArthur grant to do that for us from now on.
Correct, that's right, I understand.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we do have a motion and a second. Do you guys want to clarify your motion, exactly what your motion is? It's moved to approve the position titled DBM rating for the state's attorney's prosecution investigator for 2021 information at grade 18 DBM, B-24. Is that what the motion was, LaCroy?
Yes.
And the second was?
Correct.
Okay?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. One no from Commissioner Hancock, and the motion passes. Item 17.
Good morning, Commissioner, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Before you here is a permission to advertise and let for the Sonquist Road Bridge. There was a lot of debate that went on between Sean and myself and Mark on, with the passage of the new wheel tax and the availability of big grants. Um, you know, at this time, we, we've got two slated, uh, Thunderhead Falls slated to apply for those big grants. Um, the, the debate was whether we save this bridge and, or get this bridge and apply for big funds, um, which in turn would, we'd have to get it redesigned. Currently it's designed as a double T, um, with the DRT specifications to submit it for a big grant, the abutments need to change for the scour protection, which then entails lengthening the bridge to go to a bold T. To do the double T bridge that we've got designed currently already, uh, is going to estimate between 350 and 400,000 dollars. Bros Engineering is doing a similar project on a big fund, oh, I don't remember what county, but they estimated to go to a bold T, to redesign it and go to a bold T would cost about $900,000. So with our minimum of a 20% match, um, that's 180,000 bucks, plus the 70 that we've already got, plus another 30 that we'd have to do to redesign it, um, to get it to construction next year is going to cost us about 50,000 to 80,000 bucks more than if we were to apply for a big grant and get that. We feel in the, the office that it's pretty unlikely that we're going to get three big funds, three big grants next year for three different bridges, so that was, that's the decision, um, that's why we're here in front of you today, asking for authorization to advertise a let for in-house construction.
So do we have a motion? Or discussion? Discussion?
Yeah, I was just, uh, Joe, this, uh, double T girder design would be comparable to what we did on the Nemo Road? Same, same type of construction?
Yes, sir.
And what, what's the length of that bridge?
So the length of Nemo Road, um, it's actually, there's the, the bents and-
The Sonquist.
The Sonquist is 50 feet.
50 feet?
Right, which is the extent of, the, the longest you can go on a double T, they don't make them any longer. Um, on the Nemo Road bridges, there's actually three spans, two 30-foot and a, a 50-foot in the middle.
Will that be a single lane or a dual lane?
This is a, a double lane, it is a full width, uh, bridge.
I assume that bridge was put in in 19, after 72 floods, it'd be about 48 years old.
I believe so, I can't confirm, if you give me a minute, I could probably confirm that, but I believe that's probably correct.
But then, is that one of the brid, we have 20 bridges that are in dire need of, is that one of the?
Yes, it is load, load rated at 19 ton, uh, per single unit and 32 tons, so it's about an eight-ton D-rate, um, for combination vehicles, and it is actually on one of our dead-end roads. There's nine landowners, uh, beyond that, I believe there's eight dwellings on the other side of that bridge, with no way, if that bridge collapses, there's no way for those guys to get out.
So when they do the bridge, do they use the same abutments?
That, no, this will, uh, this will be a complete redesign, they'll, they'll redo the, the abutments on this bridge.
And what do they, how do they, do they do a temporary bridge, or do they just do one lane and, one lane at a time so that, uh, those folks can get in and out?
With having to redo the abutments, there's no way to keep one lane open, so they will have to figure out a detour of some sort. Some people have used culverts, uh, some people have used temporary bridges, um, it just all depends on the contractor.
Okay. Uh, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Roskinak, second by Drews, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number 18, South Valley Road, no authority jurisdiction portion, Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you. Joe, you, you've got a memo on here on, on this, and, and the commission's very well, well aware of this. I'll give a little bit of history before we get going. I think it was probably September or October of last year, I sent, I brought to the commission to, a letter to try and get, uh, the city and the county highway departments to come together and work on, uh, some options for South Valley Drive. And quite frankly, I think they did a very good job. I mean, they, the city come back with some, with the options of, uh, what they would see as standard and the cost, costs of all that, and I, I couldn't find my minutes and, and notes for those, but there was some very good, it'd become unrealistic, pretty much, but it was good information that they brought back to the committee. Throughout this process of these meetings, the second meeting after that, they sat down and discussed what the possibilities are. Now, the letter that I sent out at the very beginning was to find a collaboration between the city and the county to work on South Valley Drive, to come up with an agreement. If, our intent was not annexation, intent was the citizens of the, of that area and possible annexation afterwards. I, I gotta make that clear, because that's kind of how I, I explained that. Well, I have to admit, I, I, I think the city and the county, Joe, you guys did an excellent job. I mean, with compromising with sitting down and going through it, I think we come up with a plan, uh, and we were waiting for improvement from the city side was, uh, to go into halves, widening the road a little bit, uh, things were going smooth, we're just waiting to hear back. It, it was a good compromise, then COVID came and budgets got cut. Um, when budgets got cut, uh, Del Tech from the, uh, the city side says it was taken out of his budget, they kind of removed it from there. I checked on capital improvement through the, the chairman, if we could go there and try and get money, they said no. Joe, come back, uh, we came back to this commission because we've gotten, we're getting several more concerns on it, you know, we were trying to be proactive from the beginning and it's getting worse. Uh, and the, the three options that are up, up there is what we, we discussed, and we, and I think it was a very good option, I mean, uh, through the, their committee meeting and this commission, you guys approved that, that do the option of doing the full mount, which was 250,000 if they're going to annex it, and annex it, you know, and in the back of my mind, I knew that wasn't going to go, but I, that's what the commission wanted to do. And so when I got a call a couple weeks, a week ago, saying we're still getting the concerns and I need to put it back on the agenda, I said yes. I reached out to another coun, city council member and said, hey, can you put this on your public works department meeting? Because quite frankly, you know, it, I think it's gotten to the point where we're getting a standoff with this annexation and stuff, but we were working really good until that came in. And I explained that to him and, and at first he was, he thought about it and then he called, now this is second-hand information, he said he talked to mayor, the mayor's not on with annexation. That's second-hand, I have no documentations of it, that's, that was passed on to me by Councilman Richie, uh, Nordstrom. So, to me, that puts us right back to where we were from the beginning. You know, I, I look at this and from the very beginning of the South Valley Drive stuff, to me, it's all about the citizens, it's not about the past annexation and non-annexation and so forth, the development that's going on out in that area i- is booming, and we're, we're having safety problems and so forth. Some of the information that came out of the South Valley, which was very important to me that I did not know, if I remember right, South Valley was paved by somebody else at one point, because there was possible development that was going to go on, that's how it got that way. How it got extended for, to, to Elk Vale, from my understanding, was, was more from emergency management's point of view to, to, for a second access out of there, because there's been evacuations for flooding in that area, it's several times that I know. So, but it was, it was pretty much, you know, whether the city did it or the county did, I think we all probably agreed at some point that it needed to have that second access. But we're getting into this who's responsible, quite frankly. And we've got several roads, as Joe was mentioned, in our area, that's why I'm glad, I'll, I'll point this out, that Ms. Hancock's working with, with the planning department, looking at some of the Sioux Falls areas with the three-mile limit stuff, because we got to find a way to work together on these. We really do, we do it with the snow removal and so forth, but I think we need to do it on this. What the commission wants to do, I'm not sure. I can tell you what I'd like to do, I'd like to see it go up in front of the public works department with the option that those guys came up with, give those council members that option, get on record whether they want to be a part of the solution or not. That's my thoughts, because I think they've gotten some funding back, that's what I personally would like to see. I don't know what the commission wants to do, but I think we need to do something.
That would be my opinion as well, Lloyd.
But I just wanted to give a little bit of history and, you know, one of the comments that I've heard is, talks about Sioux Falls, how they have, you know, because the city would, was at one time pursuing, uh, wanting to, to undo that donut hole, they wanted to get it annexed, and this was years ago, but I think it's become acceptable now to have these in your city and count, or cities, from my understanding, maybe that's why they're not pursuing. Deb may have more information on it than I do, but, you know, that, that's my thought. My thought is, is, is the residents out there, they, you know, when they buy a property out there and live out there, they don't know the, all the details of the road, they just know one's there and one's not, they don't know who's, how it's broken, especially in that type of an area. And, and that's who I'm trying to help. I want to help the residents, and I think we need to work together, but, you know, do we, do we order Joe out there to go out there and fix those potholes, fix it up as much? He doesn't want to do it because then Nelson says he's responsible for it. I get that, but we need to do something.
So Commissioner LaCroy, I agree with you, go to city council and take it in front of them, but I've given them an option, if this was my choice, that if they didn't want to share those costs, we turn it back to gravel.
Well, here's the deal, I mean, we had that agree, we, didn't we, Joe, didn't you agree that we kind of had that agreement, we're going to go a little wider, try and split the costs?
I'm trying to remember, but yeah, it was, uh, you know, I think it's a 24-foot road right now, Mike?
Yeah.
I, I believe it's a 24-foot road and we do 26-foot, um, and, and do a mat, a, a four-inch mat, add some gravel, and I, I've got that cost, that cost estimate for reconstruction comes in at about 217,000 bucks.
Yes.
Um, you know, prices will just continue to go up. Um, the, the grinding back to gravel, uh, as Deb pointed out, that'll cost us about 40,000 bucks. Um, you know, that's, that's a, a, a means to get rid of the potholes, it'll, you know, the gravel will pothole out, uh, don't, don't get me wrong, but, um, the gravel is maintainable, um, whereas the asphalt is not. I would like to point out, you know, we're coming up against winter here real fast, you know, Mother Nature gave us a taste of it here a couple weeks ago. Um, with that, the highway department does have, we've got our, our annual chip seal projects next week, uh, we do have some other roads that are, are currently in our jurisdiction, um, that need, are in dire need of some help before winter time. So it's, we're up against Mother Nature to get something done, and I don't know that the time is there, um, with the availability. Now, could we contract it out? Yes, um, I don't know what the cost on that is until we get a contractor to go out and take a look at it. J&amp;J Asphalt Western, Simon, one of these guys, to go out and take a look at it and see what it would cost for them to grind it back to asphalt, I don't know that answer. Um, but I don't, I don't feel that the highway department has the time and resources to do that this year.
Yeah. So the bottom line is, is it takes time to go through the count, or the city, and, uh, again, if it was me, I'd just, to make it, if we were going to do it, I'd just spend the 40, because if they don't want to share the cost, um, seems more appropriate to make it easier on us, make it easier to maintain for us, and not cost us more and more money on trying to turn something in that we would have to maintain and, and keep maintaining. Um, and it still is a safety factor, and it makes it still safe for the citizens to drive on that road. Um, but I like your idea of, of giving that option to the city, and this is what we're, we're, we're saying, we'd like to share those costs at 17, but if not, we'd end up doing the 40. The other issue here, guys, is, um, Pennington County Highway Department only has so many people, and they have priorities, so there's a couple of things that we have to remember as commissioners. To go tell the highway department as one commissioner to go do something, um, and not saying you, I'm not saying anybody in general, I'm saying you need to bring your projects to us and not to Joe. And this is the way to do it, Lloyd, and, and you've done it right, because if we're spending money and he's trying to do his work and his priorities are, uh, a five-year plan or a plan, you can't just go, Joe, that'd only take you a minute, because that minute, if everybody on this commission had five different things, uh, he doesn't have enough time. So when he's saying no to you, or, um, that doesn't work for you, you need to bring it to the commission and then discuss it, because we're finding his priorities, we keep adding stuff to them. He already has other stuff that was on his list before this that he's spending money on and using his budget for when we're adding 10,000 here or 40,000 here, so just food for thought, when we're thinking about our projects that seem pretty simple, um, they already have lots and lots of projects and lots and lots of priorities that they have to finish, and there's only so much manpower that they have.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
You know, I sit there and look at the density that, uh, and the budget that the city has and the budget that the county has, and, and, and how quick we could, uh, resolve this issue, I, I think the $40,000 option, uh, taking the asphalt and turning it into millings, I, to me, that's just a, a common sense approach, because that's going to get done the quickest and it's going to provide, uh, a, a quicker safety factor. I think long-term, there's a long-term solution too, and I don't think we're gonna, that there's gonna be collaboration between the city and the county, but, uh, I think the immediate fix would be the 40,000, uh, converting that back to gravel.
Madam Chair.
So, um, Commissioner, or Commissioner, Superintendent, you're saying at this point, this is probably not going to happen this year, because of priorities and other things that are above this, that have, um, more density and, uh, more areas to finish before we go to South Valley, am I correct?
I, I don't want to say that it's not going to happen this year, but it would be, be a tight squeeze. Um, you know, we, we did finish our, a large project out on Longview, Commissioner DeSanto, we did, uh, we actually chip sealed Jim Street while we were doing our chip seal this year, so.
Good.
Um, those residents should be happy.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that need to happen prior to, to South Valley Drive for, to get- There's a lot of things that need to happen prior to, to South Valley Drive for, to get that manpower shifted out there. Not, Mark, can we do it in winter time? Can we haul gravel on that and get it ground up in the winter time?
The frost and the.
Remember it's open? Yes, we can. Too much snow, we're, we're shut down. But on open winters, yes.
So we can approve it to get done, but based on your priorities, when, when you have that time to, you know, knowing that it's on the list and it's going to be gravelled. I think that's a, a thing that, um, Commissioner Cora, if I'm right, that at least it's something that's on. You can say, you know, we have it on our list, um, for this year. Um, we're gonna try to get it done this year. If not, but we're gonna turn it back to gravel.
What's the, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
What's the possibilities of, you know, Ron, you, you've seen quick patches in place to get by. I mean, one of the biggest concerns is the pothole of mine was, people are going on the shoulder of the road to, to bypass these spots. And I guess my concern would be, is there a possible solution to do a temporary patch to get us by to next year when we're better prepared and we can move forward? Is that a possibility? I know you, you're throwing good money after bad, but that, that's one way.
Commissioner LaCroy, I would say, yes, it's a possibility, but I would encourage you not to, you know, we don't want to throw money away. Um, the, the cold patches and, and the asphalt's very expensive. Um, grinding it back to, to gravel and adding gravel to it, that's something that's gonna stay there. That's money that we're going ahead. Um, you know, it's money that we're not just throwing away, I guess, for, for lack of a better term. It's money that we're spending towards the, the greater cause. That $217,000 includes the grinding of the asphalt and turning it back to gravel. So, there's a, there's a step process. So you gotta grind it back to asphalt and add gravel to it before you can overlay it.
Okay, that, thank you. Because that, that's one of the things, I think as a Commission, we could do with an intent. And they want it paved. There's other options. But I think, uh, if this Commission's, you're, you're absolutely, grind it up and put it back down to gravel. At least we have the base to work with.
And Commissioner Cory, food for thought is, this, he can't do this right away. He's saying he can't do it right away. So that gives you time, if you want me to go with you, uh, to put this on their radar. And then if they are going to pay half, um, that would change the gravel. Cause he doesn't have time to do it right now anyway. Maybe we can still, um, make that option and say, we can go to city council, put it on their agenda, Public Works. And then, um, if that doesn't happen, the motion would stand as turning it back to gravel.
All right, Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Bottom line is, is that road was never meant to be paved by a city or county project.
No.
It was done, I don't know if, if we even authorized it for that matter. I tend to.
I answered that question, uh, where Mark went, but Heine, that, it was paved back when Heine was Superintendent. And, um, Mark tells the story that, you know, he was driving by one day and it's like, what's going on? Why is this paved?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it was a developer that went in and put a two-inch mat down.
It was done improperly.
Correct. It, it was done with a two-inch mat and there was no final, there was no two-inch top lift put on it.
Yeah.
And with just a two-inch mat, there's no structural integrity there.
But I guess the bottom line is, what I'm pointing out is that the citizens that live out there were never expecting it to be paved in the first place.
Right.
Um, and so turning it back to gravel, uh, in, in my opinion, is no disservice to anyone. On the other hand, I also want to know that if we turn it back to gravel, spend $40,000, turn it back to gravel, that two years from now, we're not gonna be talking about paving it again until the city annexes. That's, that needs to get done before we do anything else other than turn it back to gravel. That's my opinion.
And I'd like to point out, with turning it back to gravel, it will need some maintenance done on it, right? I mean, with the traffic count that's on it, um, I was just trying to look that up. I don't recall. Looking through some of Heine's notes, he, he used the ADT of about 400. Where it's, if you go above that 400 ADT, that average daily traffic count, if you go above that, you're spending more time maintaining it. And it's, it's better to turn it to a chip seal or a blotter surface.
Yeah.
Um, which is, I, it's not gonna hold up better than the asphalt. Um, if you, if you put a, put the gravel surface down and then do a chip seal over the top of it, we call that a blotter surface, right? It looks like pavement. Everybody thinks it's pavement, but it's actually just gravel with a chip seal over the top of it.
Right, right.
Okay, so do we, do we have a motion or?
One other question. What part of making, creating that connection to Elk Vale did we have in that? What, what say did we have in that? Was that our decision? I mean, it wasn't this board's decision, obviously, but.
No, they just did a piece of it. They just did the second half and they de, basically they annexed in around that road when the city annexed in.
But whose, whose idea was it to make that connection?
It was, it was pushed by pretty much emergency management.
Yeah.
But.
And county emergency manager?
No.
The city's?
City.
Okay. The reason that that road getting torn up so bad is because of the increased traffic.
From city.
Because of that connection being made has, we, that wasn't, you know, again, I, I hate saying it's your fault, my fault, whoever's fault. But frankly, the truth is, that road gets torn up because of all the exit, the increased traffic from that cutoff. So we, yeah, let's gravel it. I'm going on too long.
Let me pass one thing else on to one of the biggest discussions that's been going on for the last four years. Once we do this, we take it over. We're taking ownership. Cause that's what the, a lot of this has been is, is if I do something, that means I'm responsible for it. If we're gonna take it down to gravel, when we get those phone calls of it's washboard and it's dangerous, we should take care of it. That, that's been a lot of the discussion back and forth.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. But I also think that it may be, it might be a good idea to, um, to do that second idea here. We had, uh, I mean, not only take it down to gravel, but also, close it to through traffic east of Fairmont. To reduce the, to, to reduce the through, the through traffic.
I think you'd be steering a hornet's nest myself. I mean, with all that development that just started out there.
Well, there's only, what, five residences past Fairmont Street? Between Fairmont and, and.
Past, but.
There's five residences.
Our, our traffic count is, was higher than Longview on that road.
Okay, guys. I don't think legally you can close it anyway, Mark, because it's a second access.
I'd make a motion that we, uh, take the option to and change the road surface, uh, back to gravel, but at the convenience of the Pennington County Highway Department.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Motion made by Drews. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Commissioner Roskinet, please.
If we go that road, is it possible to get some, uh, help from the city?
On?
On the gravel option?
I, I don't know. I don't know that, at this point with COVID-19 and their budgets, I don't, I don't know that the money's there. Um, I, I would like to, to point out, you know, we, we can definitely do this. Um, the question's gonna be, do we have the authority to go maintain it then? Um, cause it's not on our secondary roads as maintained roads. And, and I don't know where Jay went, but, uh, there, there's a lot of question and there's some stuff that we need to take care of in-house as far as our secondary roads, according to the state statutes, but.
To this, this point, Joe, I'll just, I'll just say, if you can make it a secondary road and make it gravel, do it. Because at this point, get rid of the headache, cause this thing's been on this, the agenda for 10 years. So, or 20 years. So if we can make it a secondary, show us how we do it. Make it gravel, if I'm correct, Commissioner, and be done with this, this road. And then if the citizens or they have development out there, then whatever we do, we'll do by county standards and we'll make sure they make it a paved road if they decide to do anybody a development in our donut hole.
Just a little FYI. During one of the meetings, Rusty Schmidt from the Rapid Valley Sanitary District, you know, he, he made the comment that it's gonna be, the, the cost for utilities, it can be expensive. And he doesn't foresee anything in 20 years.
Okay.
That was a comment that Rusty made.
So I would ask Commissioner Drews that the motion be that we place it on the secondary highway system or direct myself to bring back a resolution to, to place that on the, on the secondary highway system. Um, and then we can do it at our leisure, basically. Then we take ownership of it. We'll, we'll grind it and turn it back to gravel.
I'd be agreeable to adding that to my motion.
Is that, DeSanto?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay, we got a solution.
Thanks.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Just give you one more thing. We ain't busy enough yet.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay. Item 19 is items from Chair and Commission Members. Holly, do we have anything that we're missing?
Heating system.
Commission.
Summer's over.
If I may, Mark just pointed out something on the portion that the city constructed down there. I believe it's still in city limits, or is it?
Yes, we looked.
It is still in city limits?
I think it is, Mark. They annexed it in. Joe showed it to me when we were there, that that part, that secondary access, that last quarter mile or half mile, or whatever it was, Joe may remember on that quarter, on that corner.
Yep.
It becomes ours after that little piece. Cause what they did is they annexed around it, left that, uh, road.
What's that?
So, Joe, tell me what you're gonna say from that.
So I guess the question is, does that include that portion that the city constructed?
No.
Just up to the city limits then?
No, we don't want to touch your road, Joe.
We can't touch their road.
Okay, that's just clarification. Thank you.
And please send out a memo, don't move our, what the discussion was today.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks for the question. Uh, okay, let's go with, let's go from the bottom. Lloyd, you're first.
Oh, jeez. No, that's good. Um, I attended, uh, Jesus, well, of course, we, we attended the conferences on Monday and Tuesday, uh, in Sioux Falls. That went very well, I thought. There was, I was only disappointed in one class that was zoomed in because I, I thought I was making my point to be there, to be person to person and, and so that disappointed me. But there were some good discussions and it actually got me. One of the best things that came out of this is, is, and I forgot, I was in a hurry. I was gonna bring for Gary Drews this morning, my over mobile homes, uh, the requirements and some of the stuff that we'd had our discussions on. People, we had one class specifically on, on mobile home modulators and some good discussion on that and brought light. Um, but I think some of the personal contacts out of that meeting were the best for me. Uh, talked to Cindy Hayden, how do you pronounce her name? Haydenberg?
Yeah, Cindy Hy.
From county, uh, Minnehaw County Commission. And, and one of the things that, uh, I, I didn't get a chance to do, I wanted to go tour their, uh, safe house that they have and find out some of the funding that they have. But I just, I ran out of time to be able to run out and do that. But I'll be down in that area, I'm sure, again this year or so. That'll probably be something I'll go visit the safe house and see how that's operated and so forth. Because I had another Zoom meeting Tuesday night while in Sioux Falls with the collective healing group that's working with the police department. And I guess I was a little distraught after that meeting because, uh, some people were invited. It was a Zoom meeting. And then after two years of some hard work and solutions and giving recommendations from the police department, a group of people zoomed in. And it just seems, no matter how hard you work, how hard you do, you get dissent, dissent from what you're doing there. You're not doing enough. You're, these were some of the comments that came through this meeting. And we let him speak, didn't let him, let him, we heard him. But a lot of the stuff that they were saying, in my opinion, uh, was lack of information. And just came out of dissent and wanting to be away from everybody. And, and that's one of the things I'm hating about this Zoom. These meetings over the meeting is that people can come in and say what they want and zoom out. Zoom in and zoom out is what they're doing. And, and create a lot of dissent and, and, and stuff like that. So I was disappointed on that because we're doing some great work with that collective healing and with some recommendations and so forth. But, uh, I'm trying to think of anything else. I didn't make their quality meeting because I was in, in there. Um, Health and Human, I think I brought that up last time, Health and Human Services has passed their budget. That's all I can think of right now.
Thank you, Lloyd. Commissioner Drews.
Okay, I'm gonna leave the Building Committee for Ron to speak on. I was out of town, so I wasn't in attendance at either the Government Affairs or the Chamber Board, uh, meeting. Uh, Healthcare Trust continues to work on developing additional benefits for employees that wish to be a part of the healthcare program. And, um, I don't think there's any reason, need to go into any detail on that. Financially is still very sound, uh, works well. I think as far as the, uh, annual convention, uh, I found, uh, the sessions that I went to to be, um, pretty beneficial and informational. Um, the, the mental health one I thought was a, a, a good session relative to numerous counties that, uh, uh, everybody's kinda in the same boat, that they all are in need of, uh, some mental health services in their areas. And so West River is not alone in that. You have a lot of, uh, counties and, and entities in the northern, especially northern part of the state that feel, um, the, the same way. So, um, I think the discussion was good from the standpoint that I think discussions will continue uh, with the state, uh, demonstrating the need that, uh, there needs to be some, uh, resolved in some of the challenges that we have in the, in the mental health area. So I, I, one of the main things I think that comes out of an annual convention like this is the, uh, connection that you make with fellow Commissioners or other counties, talking about, uh, mutual issues and how you resolve those. Uh, Ron and I had a good discussion with a Commissioner from Yankton County and, uh, don't know if it was a lot of benefit to us, but I think we was able to share considerable information with that Commissioner. So, uh, overall, I thought the, uh, annual convention was very good and informational. And, um, I just, I commend the, uh, the County Commission Association for going forward and having the convention. Thank you.
Second there.
I did the, went to the Fire Service Board and we talked a lot about PPE reimbursement and, um, mostly just seeing how everybody's, was doing, staying safe. And, you know, with the fires and the things going on. And right now it's more air quality, which is kinda crazy. But, um, a lot of fires, California and that area. And I just heard on the TV as well that, uh, in Portland, Oregon, Spokane, that area, Washington, the air quality is the worst and people should be advised where the, the, I forgot what's called N5s or something kind of mask. So I was like, holy cow. Um, Planning Commission was very good. Um, you have some really good Planning Commissioners under. They're looking at water sources for the future, um, thinking that the aquifers are just gonna have enough, uh, water for the development in the future in the county. Um, that's something to, to look at. So, um, water resource, um, is a huge thing. Um, detention ponds, holding ponds in order for developments, we are looking closer at that um, because of what that is doing to affect, uh, the next development by it. Um, we're letting huge developments come in and then, um, the impact of what's that's happening when that drainage comes off of them. So, uh, something that actually Joe is looking at as well from Highway Department. Um, the other thing is I asked on Hill City Road, Old Hill City Road, could it take more development? And when do we find that that's enough development? Not on that, just that road, but Pennington County roads where we are putting more development on these roads that are not up to standards in the first place. So, um, in this case, it was Old City, Old Hill City Road. How much more development could that road take? Cause it's a, it's a pretty good road now. But, um, how much more could it take for, if it's summer traffic, uh, we all understand it's gonna be pretty big. Um, we're talking, um, use, um, in general, that once you put people that are gonna live out, out there full-time, uh, that road's got some narrow curves and some major issues. So, um, just things to, um, food for thought, um, when we're approving developments to look at and for them to look at. And they all agreed. And then they started talking about different areas um, that probably at that time, we could have made a little bit, or we could have made a difference if we had started thinking a little bit more ahead on those areas. So, um, good discussion. And again, we have some really good, uh, planning. And again, we have some really good, uh, planning commissioners, um, that really are forward-thinking and, uh, I appreciated that, uh, conversation and we had a really good meeting. Um, anything else? I'd go ahead, Commissioner.
On the Hill City Road thought process, were you also taking into consideration water out there too?
Yes, sir, that's.
Was it more, was it more just the infrastructure of the road and?
Um, first it was, I brought up the road and then, um, what's her name, Kathy Johnson, she lives out there and the wells are pretty shallow and stuff right now and they don't know how much more they could go deeper in order to hit water in those areas and how much more development you could take from not taking away from another well in the surrounding areas. So, uh, she had brought that up. But we have been, and I think Gary, I don't know if they talked about it, I thought Charlie had talked about it at your meeting, about how much water resource we really have. Um, so Brittany has taken that into consideration, uh, with drainage roads and some other things for impact. But, uh, again, um, something for us to consider for the future.
Well, I looked at property out on Hill City Road, Old Hill City Road, two years ago and talked to three neighbors, uh, on that surrounding property and they were already having water supply issues. So, yeah, I think that that is a, that's definitely a concern.
That's about all I have, Ron.
Well, I attended the annual convention in Sioux Falls, which, uh, I went to two or three 45-minute workshops. Uh, mobile homes is quite interesting because, uh, the ladies from Pier knew Phil as well as me and Lloyd. So, uh, that was quite interesting. Mobile homes, you know, they're, they're just, uh, a mobile shell, but they're pretty complex and we have to deal with that. And they gave us some really good material that, uh, I have in my, uh, cabinet there. I'm going to use that for reference in the future. And then, as Gary said, we attended the mental health, what our obligation as a county, what we are obligated, we shall do and what we, you know, may do. So, that was, uh, quite interesting. And I guess I didn't realize that, you know, you got to have mental health boards and how that system works. So, I got a bit of an education there. But I think the thing that I really enjoyed was just going out and talking to the vendors because those vendors, uh, as the mayor of, uh, Sioux Falls said, without those vendors, he wouldn't have that, they wouldn't be able to put that convention on. And there's some good vendors. They had, uh, I enjoyed the one where the asphalt company from Minnesota actually took some of the really poor asphalt conditions of the parking lot of the hotel that we stayed in. And they went out there and actually fired it up and, and, uh, used some kind of an elastic, uh, combination of elastic and aggregate and they bought some thick sponges and go, I don't know what that would cost, but it was pretty impressive. And then we had a good lunch and, uh, I think everybody's just pretty amazed to, that's probably one of the large, uh, largest groups at that convention center seen in a few months, uh, do the COVID. So, I think everybody, a lot of these people that I talked to from Minnesota, they'd say, I can't believe the way things are in South Dakota. And not only at the convention, but, uh, in just in other areas that I ran on, the people, they just said, uh, South Dakota's pretty cool. We, we appreciate the fact that, uh, you know, we're, we're human beings and we have the right to do what we feel is safe, as long as it's safe for other human beings and use, uh, use some common sense and best, best practices. Aging Committee, we, we haven't met for months. We do a little emailing. Uh, we're going to meet next month. We'll have our first meeting where we are in person. That's scheduled for Hill City at the Senior Citizen Center. But what we did, uh, via email is that we agreed to purchase about $6,000 in Dial-A-Ride vouchers for the senior citizens to ensure that they have, uh, adequate access to medical facilities and, and their shopping needs. So, uh, I think, uh, you know, as you get older, you, you don't, we don't think about it, but I, I sit there and I know a number of older people that have a problem getting to the hospital or getting to a medical appointment. So, I think that Dial-A-Ride program's pretty important. And, uh, and our aging committee, we support that very much. Uh, the, the Building Committee, you know, we talked about the Cross Street, we talked about maybe buying a, another lot and we talked about this and that and the, but one thing that, as a commission, that we have not really discussed is the infrastructure of the jail, which is a, it's hidden. You can't see it out of sight, out of mind. But Mike brought it up, that they had a incident and that incident is a, a broken sewer line. Because, uh, when they built our jail towers, they used cast iron, uh, sewer pipes instead of poly. And these pipes are starting to deteriorate, uh, from the effluent and whatnot. And so, now that Mike's brought that to our attention, I think that we need to sit there and say, hey, what happens? You know, have a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. What happens if we have to shut down a pot or two? You know, what, how do we displace, it's not like a, an apartment. It's a controlled jail environment. So, I, I think we're just starting to, uh, acknowledge that we have to do, we have to figure out some kind of a game plan. I mean, not only how are we going to fix it, who's going to fix it, how long's it going to take to fix, but how's it going to get paid for? So, this is one of the things that we're just, uh, starting to do, some minor research in the Building Committee.
Thanks, Ron. I think with the jail, um, years ago, I was on the city council and they expanded jail. Then they made the parking garage. And since I've known, um, and since we did that, I've known that that infrastructure and that sewer and water line, mostly the sewer, um, needed to be upgraded and the old pipe needed to be taken out. So, since then, we have done other things in the jail and surrounding area of that, that has impacted that and been told that it hasn't really impacted it. So then, now we're back to square one again, that, uh, we did get a bond, um, to do a kitchen and laundry. And was, it doesn't, it didn't make sense to me that it didn't impact the sewer or the, the, uh, and, and again, maybe it wasn't in the area where the sewer and the water was, but it seems like it would have made sense at that time, again, to me, which I did bring up, that we should probably add that to it and now we're talking about it again. So, again, it's something that needs to get done and Ron and, and Gary, I encourage you to push that forward uh, because it's been on the radar for many years, kind of like this road out here that we talked about. So, um, before we decide to do another building or, or spend money on something else, I think that should be a priority to, to check not only that infrastructure, but any infrastructure that Pennington County has for water and sewer that we need to improve before we add more buildings and not, not, uh, make sure the infrastructure is taken care of in the buildings we have.
It'd be nice to have a memo on that.
It would. How our infrastructure is in our buildings that we have today and anything that might need to improve or be a priority before we add more buildings or, uh, change anything else to spend more money on existing buildings. So, Mr. DeSanto?
As, uh, all of you know, I was unable to attend any of my meetings because of health concerns and therefore don't have anything to report. But I do have a question for Ron, um, on, and Gary can answer it too because both of you went to the Sessage, but Session. But are there specific requirements for every county, legislative requirements for mental health, for what we provide as far as mental health is concerned? Or is that basically up to each county what they decide they want to provide?
No, it's, it's set out in statute as to what, what you have to provide. It's pretty detailed.
And is it, is it statutes that have also limitations on it or as to how far you can provide? Or, or is it basically minimums that they're?
No, I, I think it's primarily minimums, but the minimums are pretty high for.
Are they?
I think there was four basic requirements and one would be a hearing.
Yep.
And there's three others. Uh, they were general, but those were the bullet points.
Okay.
We do have, I was curious, what is it, a me- mental, I think, what do they call it, mental health board or?
Uh, we have a Board of Mental Illness in Pennington County and Jay is actually one of the attorneys that sits. We have hearings on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. Um, it's, it's quite a deal.
To determine if someone is.
For involuntary commitments for things like that. Yes, sir.
Our mental health board is a very active board.
Yes.
Um, although it's a volunteer position, they spend, each of those members spend a lot of time relative to those, not only the hearings, but the preparation for them and stuff.
Okay, and then they.
They wanted to make sure that we understood that the, there's a difference between mental health and then alcoholism and, and drug addiction. You know, there's different criteria. And the county's responsibility for alcoholism and drug abuse is totally different than what our responsibility is for mental health.
Just talk about that TIF thing.
So then another question for you, Ron, is, um, on the Dial-A-Ride, is Dial-A-Ride, uh, are some of those volunteers? Or is it all provided by the city?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wondered.
And they only go to a certain area, but they're, um, they do some very good service for senior citizens and people with disabilities and.
Yeah, I wondered about the volunteer thing because there's a lot of churches out there that have lists of people that are willing to drive people around if, you know, if they need help.
I'd love to have that list for my aging committee.
Yeah.
For your aging committee?
Because, because sometimes Dial-A-Ride doesn't work for everybody.
Well, and what's interesting is sometimes you volunteer and you never get a call for years.
We, we, if we had some numbers, I think that would help us. I'd love to pass that on.
So, bottom line, um, why that usually doesn't happen is liability.
Well.
Gary, I'll let you go first.
Madam Chair, one, just one final thing that I have is each year at the county convention, they have a memorial service, uh, to honor those, uh, former and past, uh, county officials that have passed during that year. And so at the, at the service this year, uh, the late George Farabee was honored at that, uh, service, yeah, along with probably another 30 individuals, I suppose, that were, um, mentioned in there. Number of former commissioners, but other, other county officials also.
Was Carol able to make it? Do you know?
Uh, I don't believe so.
One more thing is, uh, TIFs are coming up and there's another TIF coming and people talking about TIFs in the county. Gary brought up a good point and we start, need to start looking at, um, Gary, if you'd like to tell them about what you're thinking on, um, the amount we can spend and the amount we can use in our budget in order to cover, uh, expenditure wise.
Yeah, I think that, uh, it'd be advisable for us, uh, knowing that we probably have, uh, several requests that are coming down the pike at us to get together with Auditor Cindy and, uh, try to figure out levels of where we want to be. Uh, certainly impacts our bonding authority going forward, depending on the number and the amount of TIFs. So, I, I think that we should have a session where we can, uh, discuss, you know, how does it impact us going forward? And is there various levels? Is there levels of dollars that you can commit to a TIF that, uh, would have a breaking point that would impact us in a different direction? So, um, I think that, uh, it'd be, just be wise for this commission to sit down and, and do that before we start receiving them one at a time, coming in and have some kind of an idea of what our direction is going to be in the future on those.
Well, I'm sure, Gary, that there's, uh, assets to liability thresholds that, that are in direct relation to our bond rating. That's pretty much what a bond rating is, is what our ability to pay our, our debts. So.
Maybe, um, on the 29th, Holly.
Until it gets paid back.
That we could discuss some of that. Maybe she could send out some kind of memo on the bonding, how the TIFs affect and some information on that. Maybe just have a discussion on the 29th with the final budget, just for informational, before all these TIFs come forward because, um, I think that should be discussed before we move any TIF forward, if that's what we're with the board.
I, I totally agree. I think, uh, I probably, our staff probably hasn't done a ton of them. So I think it's a learning process for all of us involved here. And, and I think with the, the cost of infrastructure and road construction and all these other things that are come, happening, things ain't going to happen unless you have one. And if we're going to do one, and that's why I said, at the TIF Committee for the City, we need to send some of these to Joe because some of these developments, you know, they go in and.
Pound it out.
You know, we're, we're kind of left out. We need to extend, do what we need to do, find a way to, to get some money to improve the whole thing.
Right.
Of that. So we ain't spending five years later, coming back, trying to turn something back to ground. And that's not saying that's how that happened, but I'm, you know what I'm saying?
Just more food for thought and something to, to consider. And then, uh, maybe on the 29th, um, have her send a memo out, some type of how our bond rating and some of the things, information on TIFs. And then just have a discussion on that, what that means and with Cindy, what that bottom line is.
I'll work with Cindy to get something put together for that meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Anything else we missed? If not, we need approval of the vouchers, $2,514,897.95.
Move to approve the vouchers.
Start up.
Moved by Ross Connect, second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next we have items from public. Ms. Lilias Jardine, please. Good morning. I can actually say good morning still, Ms. Lilias.
Morning.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lilias Jardine. Um, I live in District One and I am here to talk about the proposed Rapid Creek Recreation Area. Uh, there's an organization that is formed called Rapid Creek Watershed Action, which is, uh, currently composed of 18 partners. We're adding them regularly, their businesses, their other organizations. And what we want to do is to create a federally designated recreation area in the Rapid Creek Watershed. And, uh, we also want to have a mineral claims withdrawal. So, the, um, uh, idea is to go for an act of Congress. Um, this would make it so that it was a permanent, more or less permanent designation. And it would protect recreation, which of course is a major part of our economy in this area. Outdoor recreation is one of the top two or three, uh, moneymakers for our area. And, um, the proposal would, uh, not impact the tax base because the federal land would still be federal land, the state land, there's not much state land there, but the private property would still be private property. The benefit for private property owners is that they would have increased property rights due to the fact that under federal law, a mining company can come along, uh, claim the land under your property and kick you off if they find a mineable mineral. So this would stop that from happening. Um, this would not impact water rights. That's another concern some people have. It's, it's, water rights are a state matter, as you know, and this would be a change in federal designation. And I don't want to go on too long, but you have some written materials in front of you that I see you're reading. So you'll have information on the economics of this and also on the general plan. But, um, I'll be around to talk to each of you individually so that if you have questions, you can get them answered. But if you have any questions now, I would certainly take them.
Thank you, Ms. Lilias. We appreciate you coming today, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have executive session, contractual penny litigation per SDCL 1-25-2-3.
Madam Chair, it's my understanding that you do not have an executive session today.
We don't have any information.
Okay, if not, um, move to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.